The hour being six o'clock, I'd like to call the City Council, Laconia City Council Special Meeting to order on July 27, 2020. And prior to starting the special meeting, I have to read the introduction for electronic meetings. So bear with me, please. As Mayor of the Laconia, as Mayor of the Laconia City Council, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis, in accordance with Governor's new news, emergency order number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are, A, providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All council members have the ability to communicate during this meeting through the Zoom platform, and the public has access to watch the live YouTube video at Listen to this meeting through dialing the following phone number: 1-646-558-8656, or participate by the Zoom app. Webinar ID 86429937427, and your password is 075794. B, providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting using Zoom, and instructions are provided on the City of Laconia's website at www.laconianh.gov. C, providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please call 524-3877, extension 249, or email at cityclerk@laconianh.gov. D, adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled at that time. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking roll call attendance when each member states their presence. Also, please state whether there is anyone in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under the right to know law. I would call upon Laconia City Clerk Cheryl Hebert, who has joined us at the council table, to call the roll.
President, physically present.
At my home and alone.
Thank you. Counselor Haynes.
Physically present.
Counselor Hamel.
Here and alone.
Thank you. Counselor Felt. You're muted.
Here and alone.
Thank you. Mayor Hosmer.
Physically present in the City Council chambers. Before we start this evening, I'd like to send the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Staff and attendants of this evening are, as I said, City Clerk Cheryl Hebert, City Manager Scott Myers, and they are at the table with us this evening, and Finance Director Glenn Smith, who is running the IT portion of the meeting. So prior to this meeting, names were drawn. The first one was drawn randomly, if I'm not mistaken, correct? Out of a letter of the alphabet was drawn. And we will commence with interviews for award to City Council candidates. The first person, first candidate is Robert Susie. So welcome. Come on up and step to the microphone and check in with us. Welcome.
Okay, everybody can hear me? Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity to, I guess I should say, thank you.
You're gonna make one adjustment there. We're looking squarely at your time.
That's quite right. Is that okay? Okay. Thank you very much, and I shouldn't say thank you for the opportunity. My condolences to the Fonz family for what happened. We'll go from there. I want to thank you, everybody, for allowing me to make my presentation to you. We appreciate it. I wanted to give you a little bit of a background and then take any questions that you might have. Okay, as we move forward. I'm a resident of the city. My wife and I have lived here for 50 years. I put this into the present, the documentation we filled out. Lived in the same house on Woodland Avenue in Laconia. And we raised a good family of seven children, now seven children and eight grandchildren. So that's pretty good size. While here, shortly after we got married, well, we got married in 69, but a few years later, I joined the Laconia Police Department. I went through the normal process of the pre-employment and the special officer situation. Laconia Police, well, not, in New Hampshire Police Academy. And then, at the time, shortly thereafter, it's probably around five years after joining the academy, I joined the police department and decided that probably it's best to get continued education. So I attended SNU, which at the time is New Hampshire College. And four years later, working full-time, raising the family, I got a bachelor's degree. A year later, I got my master's degree. I also, during that time, left the police department, as Councilman Cheney will know, and joined Abbott Engineering at the time, over here in Cook Court. I've been with the companies since 1984. I've traveled extensively around the world, operating different manufacturing operations in Canada, here in New Hampshire. Spent a lot of time in China, all over the place, and just recently came back to be more close to the home in the last five years and traveling all over the place. It's taught me a lot, given me a great maturity throughout a lot of things. I've learned a lot, I've grown a lot. And I really enjoy Laconia. I think Laconia is a fantastic city. It's growing. We've got to stay very positive. We have our challenges here and there, but I think it's awesome. I mean, when you look at the opportunities that we have for the people that live here, around us, far from us, we're like a magnet to everybody. And we should also put that forth. I think the building of the colonial is a great thing. It'll help bring the downtime back to life, I hope. And the investments we've made in the wares have been awesome. You see more and more people there all the time. And I think the infrastructure that's been going on for the last number of years, okay, has been just tremendous, what we keep doing. Now, some of the other questions is that, why do I think that I want to be part of this group? I look at this group as being like a board of directors. We're a business. We have, Scott, I don't know the exact number, we have probably around a $70 million budget. Probably in that area, okay? And it's just like a board of directors. We're advisors. We listen to our shareholders, which are the citizens of the city. We bring that, those attributes to the council, to the mayor, to the city manager. They come to us. Tonight, you're going to work later on on the budget, finalize the budget for the coming year. Same kind of thing of board of directors to look at, and how to make things better. Whether it's through additional job growth, which we need to do. Hopefully, we could put the state school property, as it's referred to, in some great use in the future. We can bring also some more housing and all that's needed in the city, and on all areas. I read the paper, it talks about homelessness. You talk about the drug crisis that we have. We have a fantastic mental health center right behind us. Okay, that is there, and all the other, you know, agencies and all that have come from the state and the city itself, and the county, work everything all together. We have to work together to create the team to advise the people, both the shareholders and the board of directors, of what's to take the next step. At the same time, we also have to look at what the future should bring. Where do we want the city to go? We want to make sure, since we take a look at the demographics, of what the population is here. We know that our population is aging. We have a challenge in front of us to make sure that we take care of the aging through the tax situations. We also have to make sure we take care of our youth. Education, to me, is number one. Okay, all of my children have gone to schools here. Okay, and education is number, we have to take care of our youth. We also have to take care of our elderly. We also have to find a way to help, if we can, you know, emotional help to support getting our hospital back on its feet. I'm not saying, he was texting me his money. No, there's other avenues. We'll support their endeavors and what they do. I'm not sure which way they're going. I don't know if you, everybody here knows, but we have to do that. But the most important thing is, we have to work complete as a unit, as a team, okay, to bring forth what is beneficial to Laconia. We might all agree. That's fine. Debate is healthy. There's nothing wrong with that. That's great. As I said, we're the board of directors. We have to bring forth the information from our shareholders to the people operating the situation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Susie. I feel kind of guilty cutting you short.
The mayor's muted.
Muted. I also want to make sure if councillors have questions, that they have an opportunity to ask them. That's all. If that's okay with you. So just, if anyone has a question for Mr. Susie, wait. He's either present or online here. Counselor Hamel.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. It's really not a question, but I want to thank Bob for stepping forward. Bob was the City Council before and has a lot of knowledge and has acquired a lot of knowledge. I really don't have any questions. He called me up and we spoke for about 45 minutes or so, 30, 45 minutes. And we went over a lot of related things, so I just want to thank him for stepping forward. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions? I have a difficulty seeing everyone on my, I'm only getting one person at a time on my screen. So I can't say, see if we can. Any other questions? I'm sorry. Seeing none, thank you very much for your service to the community, and thanks for your oh, did I see a hand come up there?
Hand raised here. Good evening, Bob. Can you hear me okay? I think someone's got their mic they're playing with. Can you hear me now? Okay. His experience on the council, your background, can you talk about that might help you come up to speed quickly here, and what work have you done already to prepare to assume? I can't hear anything you say.
Based on your previous experience on the council and any work you've done just recently that would assist you in getting up to speed rapidly with the council's work?
What I've done recently, especially on the budget situation, I reviewed the budget, just understand it better. That's why I knew $70 million. It's reverbing back. I'm not sure if anybody can hear me. Okay. I've also read up as much as I could on the proceedings of the council, understanding we still operate under Robert's rules from my previous experiences. And the rest of it comes from the local knowledge, knowing the people. I mean, living here for 50 years, you don't go without understanding some of the challenges that we face, and some of the positives that we're going to have in front of us. Okay, it's great. Counselor Lippman, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear all of your question, so I hope I was able to do that. The other thing was, I want to thank you for our discussion we had. I called every one of the councillors ahead of time to try and understand what they were discussing about, and also, they knew exactly where I was coming from. Which, except
Any other questions, Counselor Lippman? You're open?
No, I think that he addressed what I wanted him to speak to. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no other questions, thank you again, Mr. Susie. Appreciate it. Next up is Phil Spagnolo.
Welcome, welcome. Thanks for having me, guys. I really appreciate it. You know, just to tell you a little bit about myself, my family moved here in 1979. I have, you know, I've been, I've traveled a bit in my life, but I always came back to Laconia. I got clean and sober. I'm in long-term recovery from drugs and alcohol. I got clean and sober almost five years ago. And I had just come back to Laconia again, and I saw what was happening with the drug crisis and knew that something needed to be done, and I met up with a group of people that were looking to start a nonprofit. The mayor was one of those people originally when I joined, and we were able to open up navigating recovery to help people in town to recover from drugs and alcohol, help them find services and those types of things. And for me, that was the first time that I had gotten involved in the community. And, you know, I'm really, I'm really proud of that achievement. I went on to open up sober houses for men that were very affordable. Just last year, we scholarshiped guys up to the tune of $15,000. People that could not afford to go to sober living, we, I scholarshiped them to provide an opportunity for them to get sober. You know, I've worked in the community. I've helped hundreds of people to get into treatment. But, you know, it's not the only thing that I've done. I'm really involved in the community. I've sponsored and cooked food at Hands Across the Table several times. I've done it at the Salvation Army several times. I donated a brand-new grill to the Isaiah Cafe that helps to feed the homeless. I, you know, I'm really proud to live in Laconia. I know Laconia has its challenges, but I know that, you know, with the group of people that I got to meet originally when we started that nonprofit, proved to me that when the community comes together, we can solve these problems. We can, we can make things better. And that's what I've tried to do. I've tried to carry that on since we started navigating. And, you know, I see things like downtown Laconia. I know that people are afraid to go to downtown Laconia at night. They don't want to be down there after dark. You know, we have a homeless situation. We have, you know, drug activity. And these are the things that, you know, that keep people from wanting to be downtown at night. I think downtown could be a really amazing place. We're getting there, right? We have some great things happening downtown. The Colonial Theater, obviously, is going to attract people. But we need to, if we're going to attract young families to Laconia, people that are going to come here and open small businesses and raise their families here and that type of thing. I think that we need to take a real hard look at downtown Laconia and how we can make that better. You know, and why do I think I belong on the city council? I just really want to be part of this community. I've wanted to help in any way. I have gone out. I got elected to the House of Representatives, which takes an awful lot of time if you're going to show up every, every time that you're required to be there. And so I stepped away from my full-time job to serve in the legislature. Right now, I am running for state senate. I have stepped away from my full-time job to run that senate campaign, and and I would do the same thing here. It's for me, like, making those sacrifices and being able to serve my community is what I truly believe is the most important thing for me. You know, being a person who struggled with drugs and alcohol and then got sober, I learned that I needed, if I was going to be of any value to my community, I needed to lead by example, and I needed to get involved. And that's why I'm standing here tonight. I believe that I can, I can take this position. I believe that I bring a unique perspective to this situation. Having lived the life that I lived and having turned it around and accomplished the things that I've accomplished now, I believe I bring a very unique perspective to the position, so.
Thank you very much, Phil, and thanks for your work in the substance use disorder community and your commitment to the City of Laconia in a number of different ways. I turn that over to councillors for any questions. Counselor Chief.
First, thank you, sir, for coming. My question is, if you're appointed to the council, you end your campaign for senate. I think the statute is you can't hold to elected positions. No?
No, no, it's
So would you continue with your senate campaign?
I would, yes. Yeah. I believe that serving in Concord and serving on the city council would bring the ability for us to have a better line of communication with Concord. And so I think it would be, I think it would be of value to the city.
Thank you.
Any other questions from councillors? Go ahead.
Thank you for talking about what you've done to prepare specifically for the council seat at this point.
Sure. How you doing, Mr. Lippman? Nice to see you, sir. So to prepare for the, for the city council seat, I have done some research on, you know, how the city council operates. I've, you know, I'm very involved in the community, so I see where our needs are, or the needs that I believe that the city has. So I think that, you know, having been directly connected to the community now and doing the work that I do for the last five years, I think has given me a really good understanding of Laconia's challenges and also my experience. I have ideas and ways that we can, we can, we can take care of some of these problems and make Laconia a more attractive place. As we are, you know, already doing, the Opera House in Lakeport is, you know, is now a beautiful building. We're doing things like that, but we need to be doing more.
Follow-up, Counselor Lippman?
No, Mayor, I'm all set. Thank you. Thanks again.
Thank you. Counselor Hamel.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Well, Phil, just curious on what your thoughts are on being able to do both jobs, either with the senate and with the council also. At least in my mind, the council takes a tremendous amount of time to do it properly. I'm probably on six different committees and a couple of boards. So I'm just curious how you would allocate your time to be able to do both.
Well, I've, over the years, when I served in the legislature, you know, it takes a tremendous amount of time. And I was able to do that and run my business at the same time. I'm pretty good at being very productive. I'm very committed. If I'm going to, if I say I'm going to do something, I'm going to do it. Anybody that knows me will tell you that if I give you my word that I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. If I don't think that I could take this, if I didn't think I could do both, I wouldn't be standing here today. This isn't about, you know, any kind of prestige or anything like that. This is about my, my desire to serve my community, the community that I care so much about.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, and thanks for stepping forward to serve.
Thank you.
I'm glad you said that, Phil. I'm not quite sure there's any prestige up here at times. Any other questions from councillors online? Seeing none, thank you very much, Phil. I appreciate you stepping up.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Next up, we have Kellyanne Caravona, and you'll be participating on Zoom. So whenever you're ready, we're ready. Kelly, welcome.
Hi, folks. Thank you.
Pretty good.
Excellent. Please forgive me for not being there in person. I am sparing you from some of my germs this evening. So this is why I'm joining you via Zoom. First, I would like to commend Phil on five years of sobriety. That is certainly something to celebrate. And also, would just like to recognize David Bowns and his family for the work he added to the council. So I think that's important to say as well. Just very briefly, I want to leave an opportunity for any questions. But I am a resident and homeowner here in Laconia, obviously Ward Two on Crescent Street. I have three wonderful children who have all come up through the school system here. I have also worked for Laconia School District, specifically at Pleasant Street School. My background is in public health and education. I have a master's degree in psychology, and I have a New Hampshire State certification as a prevention specialist. And in 2017, as you know, if you had an opportunity to peruse my application, I was recognized as the 2017 Prevention Specialist of the Year for the state. I was nominated nationally, but the award did go, I think, to the West Coast that year. So I'm very proud of the public health work that I've done here in Laconia. I've worked with a broad range of stakeholders, local law enforcement, first responders, the school district, the hospital, the local community mental health center, and other folks just in collaborating in the spirit of prevention and community-based process. So I think the value that I bring to the council is perhaps a less political, actually, let me rephrase that, perhaps a far less political point of view on things, and more of a public health approach to community-based process and getting things done. I would agree that this council is not necessarily doing it for the recognition or that high level maybe glam that's associated with it. This is more of a roll up your sleeves and get it done kind of job. You know, we have to look, obviously, at tax caps, and what does that mean in terms of, you know, cutting necessary services or working well with the funding we have? You know, we have to look at supporting local businesses in an effort for economic growth and development. I believe that my perspective could be unique in that I really believe in the whole purpose, right, the spirit of public health is convening local stakeholders around any issue. It's identifying a problem and throwing everything you've got at it. My work, I don't have the luxury of my opinion often. We're rooted in science, facts, and data to support any strategic initiatives that we roll out. I've been engaged in many strategic planning efforts locally here and in the Winnipeg Public Health Region, which is all of Bellknap County, and the Merrimack County towns of Franklin Hill, Danbury, and Northfield. Some of you also may remember my name, as I led the effort with your city manager and your chief of police, Matt Canfield, in trying to get the local vape shop located next to the high school moved. Again, not an effort to shut down a local business, as it's a legitimate legal business that has a right to be there, but just perhaps getting the city to think about ways to have local zoning ordinances in place so that we're not dealing with that again. As the public health data shows, that you do have increased youth and young adult vape use when you have a vape shop located so closely to a high school. So those are precisely the type of efforts that I've rallied around in the past. And I thought that the city council was just an opportunity to look at some of the local, not just problems. I hear a lot of reference to the problems, but I think we do a lot really well here in Laconia. And I want to be part of highlighting those successes and building on a great infrastructure that's already in place. With that, I'll open it up to any questions or comments.
Thank you very much, Kelly. Having worked with you over the years on a number of issues, certainly appreciate your input, your hard work, your commitment to the community. Looking at councillors right now online, are there any questions for Kelly? Counselor Lippman, please. Yes.
Hi, Kelly. Thank you for coming forward and appreciate your remarks in terms of the opportunities. Do what you've done to prepare position, and then, secondly, if you could talk position. And then secondly, if you could talk about what do you see as the top three opportunities for the community?
So you broke up a little bit, but in keeping with what you asked the other folks, I think I know what you're looking for. So in terms of what I've done to prepare, I did reach out to several councilors and I appreciate the ones who are able to get back to me and have some conversations. I wanted to learn from your perspectives, what are the most important issues that our city is facing? I have my vision of what that looks like, but given no experience on the council, it was important for me to hear from all of you. So those were great conversations. Equally, if not more important, what I did was talk to local citizens. I talked to folks that I know in the school district, folks in law enforcement, neighbors and friends, just to talk about. They were really excited about my throwing my hat into the ring for this position. And I asked them, you know, I'm reaching out to the local folks that are part of the council, but what's important to you here in Laconia? I heard a broad range of themes, things from streets and infrastructure and lighting, things about supporting a rapidly aging population, especially here in Belknap County and what we can do in terms of local supports and strategies that make sense. But equally as important of a theme was how do we attract and engage young folks to come back once they've received post-secondary education? I have two nieces graduating from local university just this year, one from Plymouth State and one from Boston University. Neither of which intend to work locally. And so I engaged in conversations with them about why is that? And, and other young folks that I know recently graduated and/or have entered into the workforce already. And it just seems that the thoughts are, you know, that cities like Portsmouth are just more attractive to younger folks. And when I see development in Lakeport and I see all the great things happening, I just think it's a way to build up, not just, you know, attracting young folks to come, but to stay and work and add to our critically, you know, critical shortage areas for workforce, specifically with community mental health in our local hospital. As far as part two, I had listed, you know, COVID-19 growing issues with the local homeless population. Obviously behavioral health issues I think are glaring for most cities. That's not specific to Laconia. And that is in no way, shape or form any reflection of what we've done or what we haven't done. I think as a school district and as a city, we've responded very comprehensively to the substance misuse issue here, not only with the prevention enforcement treatment program at Laconia PD, but also the program replicated at Laconia Fire Department. My former agency Partnership for Public Health, we were the ones who helped them collect their data and, and roll those programs out into the communities. I just want to see more community-based programs like that. Additionally, I think I represent your average person here. As a single mother who raised three kids for years and worked full-time while getting a master's degree, I know what it's like to struggle and to not always have money to pay the bills. And I think families have to be nimble and I think we need to be mindful of that when we engage in strategic planning. How are we wrapping around our most vulnerable? And do they understand the issues that we're working in? And how can we give them, elevate their voice to get involved?
Thank you, Kelly. I'm all set, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Littman. Any other questions? I'm looking at Counselor Felch, Counselor Hamel. Seeing nothing. Kelly, thank you again for your work in the community, your continued commitment to the community and also for being willing to, to step up and, and put your name in the hat, your hat in the ring, so to speak. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And if I could, I just want to give a shout out to everybody. Outstanding that we had such a, such a response to this Ward Two vacancy. I think it's great that people are stepping up. So thank you to my fellow applicants. Thanks, folks.
Next on our agenda is Laura Dunn, who's with us in council chambers. Welcome, Laura. Really well. Thanks for coming.
First, I'd like to start off with my condolences from Mr. Bowns and his family and friends and colleagues here and stuff. But as Mayor Haasmer said, my name is Laura Dunn and I was born and raised in Laconia. And at 23 years old, I purchased my home where I currently live and I've been Ward Two resident for 17 years. I have three redheaded boys. The redhead is very important. If you guys have any kids with red hair, it does make a difference. They're great and they are fourth generation here in Laconia. And I am currently finishing my first year on the school board. And I am a stay-at-home mom and it gives me great flexibility and time to be able to be involved in the community. Last spring, I was able to coach T-ball and in the fall soccer. This will also be my third year volunteering at the Children's Auction, which is just an amazing way to give back to the community. And I feel diversity is really important for the board and I feel that's something that I can bring. I can bring a well-rounded perspective and stuff. And not only, you know, born and raised in Laconia many generations, my family comes from, you know, self-employed, hardworking businesses and stuff. So, you know, we talk about growth and development. That's very important for the city. And, you know, you, you need to have growth and development. And I would be grateful for the opportunity and to just say, I think that some of the key issues are, again, I'm on the school board, education, you know, we have to take care of our kids, you know, we want families to come here. Just like I said in the newspaper, our low income in our elderly that have, you know, our elderly that have sacrificed so much, given back. The city as a whole can't survive. We need to find ways for middle class to develop, to move here and enrich the city to grow so that we can take care of our, our elderly and stuff. And I had mentioned, and I'd like to explain, so my best package deal. We all like the best deal, right? You go on a cruise, you want the best deal. So I feel, I have a few realtor friends. Three or four top questions are when somebody is looking to move into the city, whether it's a job opportunity, they're, they're looking to open up shop, something, maybe they just want to move. It's how are the schools? What is the police department? Your fire department? Those are like your top three questions that, you know, get asked. Not that there are others, but those, those are your, your top three. And I feel we have a lot of wonderful things going for the city, but we need to, you know, see that momentum continue to grow. And we need to make sure that, you know, right now, our leaders are, I feel, top-notch between Chief Canfield and Chief Giotti and Mr. Tucker. We have, you know, some amazing stakeholders in the city right now that we can offer these families reasons to move here, to invest in Laconia. We can offer them the best package deal. And because if somebody is looking to move here, and again, to invest in stuff, and you say, well, how is, you can offer our police department? Excellent. Fire department's good. School, not so much. They might move to another city. They might move to another town. That could deter them. So again, I just feel, you know, offering the best package deal is something that we can really strive on. And right now, again, our leaderships, our stakeholders that are involved are some of the, the best I've seen living, living in the city. And I think that's a wonderful thing and stuff. And I would like to give a little background story here. So soon as I turned 16, I went to Rich's old Guilford Walmart, which you guys hopefully remember and stuff, and filled out an application and the manager interviewed me on the spot and great back and forth. And it, I felt everything was going great. But then, of course, he asked the question, you don't have experience. And I said to him, and I said, you need, I need the opportunity to get the experience. And I said, all I can give you is my word. You can talk to people that, that know me. You know, I'm, I'm going to show up nights and weekends, you know, 16 years old. I'm like, no, I'm going to be here. I'm going to show up. And so he gave me the job and I started the next day and didn't miss a day, didn't call my night, fast forward to 90 days, I was promoted first over youngest the evening front-end manager. And it wasn't even the dollar amount, the $40,000 to $60,000 back then at 16, being accountable for and making sure, you know, taking care of the cashiers, but it was the maturity, the listening to if a customer had an issue with something, you had to resolve that issue. You had to listen, you had to hear them. And you want your customer leaving happy. And at 16 years old, I had that responsibility. And I, again, on my word, you know, just said, let me show you that I can, I can do this, that I can do the job. I'm a researcher and I, I talk to people in the city. It's about relationships, collaboration. And, and when you get out there and you really put yourself out there and you talk to people, you not only about the information, but just the wealth of knowledge that you get and honestly, by listening to. People just really want to be heard and stuff. So just like back then, I, I would be grateful for the opportunity, for the chance to show you. And, you know, I, this is my city. I love it. My three kids, you know, fourth generation. And I'm just be happy to be involved in any way.
Thank you very much, Laura. And how old are your children?
Seven, five and three.
That's like, that's like having two full-time jobs, isn't it? But I don't, and, and being able to handle that, I wouldn't doubt your ability to handle a counselor's position, that's for sure as well. So thank you for your commitment to the school board. And if I'm not mistaken, you are writing candidate, weren't you in last year? Which took a little extra effort as well. So congratulations for your willingness to not only step up, but to certainly succeed. So thank you. I will look to my fellow councilors here to see if there are questions. I'll ask a question, if I may. What, what has been your most satisfying, the most satisfying aspect of serving on, on the Laconia School Board? And what's been the biggest challenge that you're, that you're viewing right now as well?
So it probably coincides together. I would have to say the graduation. And I'm not sure if everyone's aware, an original proposal was brought to the board and we had tabled that. We really felt we needed more information. We felt that stakeholders could really come together and give our kids, our students, you know, they've lost so much with COVID. Not only the opportunity to graduate with their classmates that they some have been to school with since kindergarten, but also to have their parents, guardians out on the field with them. And take, you know, as a board, we're not hand raisers. We had healthy discussion and we tabled it. And the next presentation that was brought forth was just amazing. And if, I know some of you were involved with helping park cars and the ceremony, and I feel that that is just the best thing that we, we did for the kids in the community.
I, I think I certainly would share in that. I think it was a remarkable evening from beginning to end and certainly it was very impressive. So that's a job well done. City manager Myers and myself helped that night. We just tried to stay out of the way and not screw anything up, which is always possible with us. But anyway, so nice, nice job that evening. I, I speak to a lot of a handful of graduates from Laconia High School graduated this year who are, were so proud of that evening and the parade afterwards. So it's a lasting memory and it's nice work.
Thank you for coming forward. Question, a lot of work goes into being on a school, school board and distinguish the differences between what you see as a role as a school board member versus a city counselor? And what work had been done to prepare for the position here?
Yep. So as, you know, school board, it, it is very much about the school, the teachers, the staff, the students. Whereas I feel city council, it's the city as a whole. It's not just the school. It's your police and fire department. It's your public relations, your, you know, your servant departments. It's your growth and development. You, you want businesses to develop here. And it's also listening to your constituents and your, your ward in the city as a whole. What are their concerns? It's again, as a whole. And so how I get ready is, again, I'm, I'm a 21-question kind of person. Don't just tell me the wheel spins. How does it spin? Which way is it going? I'm a researcher. I collaborate. I, I get out there as, you know, Bob Chubb would say, let me school you up. And so again, if, you know, something came up that I, you know, wasn't familiar with, I would definitely take the initiative to talk to the people that I need to talk to so that I am familiar and I'm prepared. And that's very important to me.
Very good. And what about the issue of serving simultaneously? How would that?
Oh, oh, yeah. So being a stay-at-home mom, I definitely have the flexibility, you know, and I already asked the questions because I know that you guys have subcommittees. Our meetings do not conflict with your meetings. You know, so I've, you know, feel that there's, it's something that I definitely can take on. Again, mom with three redhead boys, I can do it. So.
Thank you, Laura.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Further questions, Laura? Again, thank you very much. I love your enthusiasm too. It's great. Thanks.
Okay.
Last but not least, right up. Welcome, Mr. Hough.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the council for having me, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager. Apparently going how everybody is going, I'll give you a little bit of the synopsis of who I am, so you can better acquaint yourself with me. I've had the advantage of watching you folks for a while. So I know a little bit about you, but you don't know much about me. My education, I attended Laconia School all the way through high school, graduating in 1984. I attended NHTI, graduated with an associate's degree in business with a major in real estate. And then I attended SNHU and graduated with a bachelor's degree in education K through eight. My employment, a couple of bullet points on that. I managed a family-owned bar and grill downtown for nine years. I also was a real estate broker for Remax Lakes and Mountain over on Court Street for three years. I was a classroom teacher, sixth grade math and science for a year. I was a field, I'm also a field operative for a solutions-based company called SteriCyclone. I've been doing that also for the last six years. Roots here in Laconia. My grandfather owned a tire recapping business during World War Two, later became Laconia City Tax Assessor for 30-plus years. Both grandparents are members of the Oaks and the Emblem Club. My mother had two businesses in Laconia, one downtown O'Shea's Beauty Boutique, another later Case Lifestyles outside of our home. My father grew up in Laconia, was a professional musician, worked at Allen Rogers, then owned two local establishments downtown, also Forever Young Bar and Grill and the Funky Mill, Funky Monkey Billiard and Dance Hall. So my cities, my family's been in the town for nearly a century. As far as community-based stuff, I volunteer to coach youth sports, baseball, basketball, soccer and swim. As you all probably know, once you're growing up, you have to. It's a rule. I've taught guitar in two of the downtown music stores and on my own. I was a middle school assistant coach for soccer for two years. And I've been the Laconia High School's head swim coach for the past five years and counting. Four of those years, I'd like to point out, were pro bono and that, that continues. Four of those years, I'd like to point out, were pro bono, and that, that continues. The reason I, I say that is because a while back, the schools had a, a few issues funding some of the extra sports. And I couldn't see letting some kids who normally wouldn't be doing the normal quote-unquote "sports" just fall through the cracks. So I have a team usually around eight to 10 kids each year. And a shout out to Craig Cousins, because he certainly makes that happen. My personal life, I've been married for 20 years, my wife's a dental hygienist, also works in public health and runs the school dental program. She's the tooth fairy that goes around all the schools and makes sure the kids get dental work. And she also pulls that program together. My daughter's 17 and is a junior in high school at a private school in Massachusetts, Northfield Mount Herman. She's a class swimmer and maintains high-level academic grades. I have a brother-in-law who was a Guilford Police Captain and currently works for the Sheriff Department, a sister-in-law who was one of the first female officers in Laconia, and a niece-in-law that is currently dispatching. We also own our own home on Highland Street, we've been there for 12 years. I have two cats, Snowball and Patches, and two dogs, two yellow Labs, Sam and Lucy. I want to thank you very much for the opportunity to talk with you folks, and if you have any questions for me, I'll have them.
I'll look to my counselors online, if you have any questions. Counselor Lippman?
Yes, you're outlining your family history and your history and the community. I understand, are you also state representative?
I am.
Can you talk, balance those two activities if you're successful there?
Well, I think one of the things that I failed to mention in this is that prior to COVID, I was a stay-at-home father. I was also given care to our, my mother-in-law, who's 88 years old, blind, diabetic, and lives in our apartment downstairs, so she needs constant care. I'm home. It's not an issue to do two things at once, I've done two things, three things many times most of my life. And also now, because of COVID, with the advent of Zoom or any of these things, I pretty much can be anywhere at any time, all the time. So I don't feel that that would be a, an issue.
And in terms of the specific position, what work have you done to sort of prepare for it?
Well, I don't think you can prepare properly for a position in two weeks. That's about how long this has been. Typically, you're gonna have two years to decide what you're gonna do and to research and everything. I've been following the city council now for about six months. Before COVID started, I was coming to the meetings and watching and, and learning and listening. One of the things that I, I just would like to say, and I, I don't mean this snidely at all, but I've been auditioning you folks, and I know that I could work with all of you. I've seen how you've handled some of your, your issues, I've seen the diligence that you've put in the care, in the research. And, and I know that I could help you out on this council.
Thank you. Well, I think attending meetings is a good way of learning, so appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lippman. Any other questions, either Counsel Hamel or Counsel Felch?
I'll pose a question, I just, I'm gonna unmute myself. What, what do you see as the biggest challenges in the city right now? And, and maybe the biggest opportunities that the city needs to take advantage of?
Biggest challenge is the homeless and the drug problem. It's, it's a drain on everybody. I've talked to one of the officers, spearheads, I believe, he talked very highly of you when I, when I spoke with him on what goes on, he was saying how it's a multifaceted approach to handle this. It's not just that they're homeless, it's not just that they have mental issues, it's not just that they have a drug problem. It's all of these things put together, and they have to, he has to try and orchestrate a way to advance all of these pieces on this front to try and help this. So I would say that that's probably the biggest problem. And, and how did you say the second part?
What do you see as the biggest?
The biggest opportunity in the city that we should be focused on as well?
As far as an opportunity, I think you're already on it, I think you're already standing on it. I've been here for 54 years, I've seen the, the, the city go up, I've seen it go down, I've seen it be flat. This is the first time in a long time that I've seen it moving, things are happening. Lakeport is being rejuvenated. That's where I'm originally from, is Lakeport. I, I see downtown starting to happen. Counselor Hamel will probably recall, I was downtown getting fitted for a new pair of glasses, because unfortunately, it's that time for me, and I, these little cheap readers, I can't handle anymore. So the, the, it's, it's a time where things are happening, the city is moving, it's going in a great direction. And I want to be on board to, to help that continue for everybody.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions, one more shot, you know? Seeing none, again, thank you, Mr. Hough, for being willing to step forward and consider serving. And thank you for your commitment to the city and the things you've done over the past 54 years, appreciate that. So the hour being 6:57:02, I'm going to recess the special meeting this evening. And we'll be coming back as soon as we start the regular meeting to take the next step in selecting the next Ward Two City Councilor. Thank you to everybody this evening, it was great to get to know you a little bit, and thanks for your willingness to serve. Thank you, thank you, City Manager. All right, any, any other counselor comments? With that, I'd like to adjourn the city council meeting at 8:35 and 26 seconds. I'd like to... What's it called when you end a recess? I'd like to come back out of recess. I'm asking the wrong person. And come back into the special meeting that we started at 6:00 PM tonight for the regarding the applicants to fill Counselor Bowns' unexpired term. So we're back in a special meeting session as of 8:36 PM, yes. And we'll be looking for a motion to move... There it is. So the topic that we're going to address right now is election of Ward Two City Councilor. A Ward Two City Council vacancy exists due to the recent passing of Counselor David Bowns. The term expires on January 3rd, 2022. Candidates were interviewed earlier this evening. I would like to just say that was an extraordinary group of candidates that we had. I think that each and every one of them acquitted themselves very well. It's nice to see so much interest in getting involved in the city of Laconia, so thank you to all the applicants. So I'd be looking for a motion to elect a Ward Two City Councilor to fill the remaining term of the late City Councilor David Bowns, which expires on January 3rd, 2022. Counselor Felch has got a hand up?
Yeah, I'd like to move to elect Kelly Caravona.
Counsel, is there a second? To Counselor Felch's motion to elect Kelly Caravona to Ward Two City Councilor. Seeing no seconded by Counselor Hamel. Further discussion? Hold on one second.
Procedure-wise, if there's three affirmative votes, that would end it, because someone would be elected at that point. If there's not three affirmative votes, then you go back and somebody else can place a name into nomination.
You've only got two.
Right.
You need three, and there aren't three.
So at this time, we have two votes.
Wait a minute, no, wait a minute.
We have a motion in a second.
Yeah, I seconded it just to have a vote.
So I, I would call the, seeing no further, just request to discuss?
No, discuss.
Counsel Felch.
Well, I'd like to actually say why. A few, quite a few people actually talked to me and her support. I think I've only had one other person reach out in support of somebody else, and that was his son. I think her diversity and what she would bring to the council would definitely be a plus. And I also look at, I look back and I, I know you guys probably know David Bowns better than I do, but I think that would be his choice.
Thank you, Counsel Felch. Is there any further discussion?
No, no, you, you.
Is there any further discussion on the motion to move Kelly Caravona to fill the Ward Two City Council seat? Seeing none, I call the vote.
Counsel Cheney?
No.
Counsel Lippman?
No.
Counsel Haynes?
No.
Counsel Hamel?
No.
Counsel Felch?
Yes.
One vote in favor for opposed. That motion fails. I'd be looking for Counsel Cheney for another motion to move a Ward Two City Councilor.
Mr. Mayor, I move the name of Bob Susie for Ward Two City Councilor.
Thank you, Counsel Cheney, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Counsel Hamel is the second. Further discussion? Seeing none, I call the vote, has the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Cheney?
Yes.
Counsel Lippman?
Yes.
Counsel Haynes?
Yes.
Counsel Hamel?
Yes.
Counsel Felch?
No.
Four votes in support, that motion passes. Robert Susie becomes the Ward Two City Council on Bing Swan. Congratulations, Mr. Susie. I will adjourn the special meeting at 8:41 PM on the 27th of July, 2020. Thank you, counselors, thank you.